So I will start, as always, with citizens' concerns. If there's anybody here who would like to bring up an issue that is not otherwise on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, the chairman's update. So we had a successful special town meeting last Monday, December 3rd, with over 900 residents in attendance. The town did an incredible job preparing for this and were prepared for up to 2,000 or more residents. So we were well-prepared. There was a smooth check-in process and the meeting went very well. So on behalf of the board, I'd just like to extend a huge thank you to the town manager, the town clerk's office, and all of the town staff who worked on that special town meeting. I think John mentioned this at one of our previous meetings, but there's now a municipal monthly newsletter that the town is putting out, and I saw that the December issue is up. So please check that out online. There's a lot of great information in there. The Health Department is conducting a survey on Acton's needs. You can find a link to that on the town website, and I believe there are hard copies available at different locations as well. And I did this a few years ago and had over 800 responses and are hoping to reach at least that many, if not more, people this year. So if you haven't had a chance yet, please look that up and fill out the health survey. The Recreation Department's offering a number of events coming up, including a drop-in shop program on Friday, this Friday, December 14th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., where you can drop your kids off at the rec center while you go shopping, hopefully locally, for some Christmas gifts or other gifts. And they also have a school vacation program if you need somebody to watch your kids well during school break. So take a look at those offerings as well. The Main Street Master Planning Committee is hosting a public forum on January 10th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in this room. This is a follow-up public hearing to one we held the summer of 2017, I believe, to talk about work that we were doing to try to master plan the 348 to 354, 364 Main Street parcel, which was where, which is where Kenny's landscaping is and where there was the proposal for the daycare. So we have some more refined, this is a follow-up to the previous public hearing to update on the work that we've done since then and to discuss some more refined proposals. And so we're going to encourage, we encourage everybody to come out and participate in that. And finally, if you see Santa around town this Saturday, he is not confused. He is just here early for a special ride and food drive. He'll be riding around in a fire truck and collecting donations for the food pantry this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And the listing of exactly where he will be is available on the site as well. So hopefully you can gather some food, non-perishable items, to give to Santa. And with that, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. We did just have our special town meeting last week, and we are now preparing for the annual town meeting, which will be April 1st. At your next meeting, we'll present some, the timeline leading up to town meeting, including the opening of the warrant. So stay tuned for that. And just on the municipal monthly, if you didn't get a chance to see it, you can subscribe to our email notifications and you'll get it directly in your inbox, or you can go to our social media channels. So I'd encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, we have a few minutes before our hearing at 7:10, so I'm going to go through the consent agenda. I'll read these items. Please say "hold" if there's anything you would like to hold. Number four, the one-day alcoholic beverage license for Jinji Tang at Nagog Woods Clubhouse, January 20th, 2019. Number five, one-day alcoholic beverage license for Ruchi Agrawal Nagog Woods Clubhouse, December 31st, 2018. Number six, a one-day alcoholic beverage license for Boston Events at the Acton Recreation Center, February 9th, 2019. I'm going to, okay, yeah, thank you. Number seven, meeting minutes for December 3rd, 2018. And number eight, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift of $2,000 from Sorrento's Pizza to support the 2019 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Mr. Benson, you held number six. Can you just use the microphone?
I held it in response to an email from Bob Evans, who lives on Audubon Hill on the south side on Brewster Lane, which is a private way. And his request was, in the license, that it be required that there be no parking on the private way. And I think that's a fair restriction to the license.
Yes, so I spoke to the town manager. They're anticipating about 100 people. It is an event where they're selling tickets and tables. We're hoping people will carpool to it, and there are about 44 parking spots there. So there's definitely some potential for overflow. So I think it would make sense to condition this on posting no parking signs on the private way. So if somebody would like to make a motion on that one.
Okay, then I would move in connection with the license that no parking signs be posted on Brewster Lane, which is a private way.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, do I have a motion on the other items?
Move to approve consent agenda items four through five and seven through eight.
Okay, Janet moves. Joan seconds. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we still have a few minutes, but John, is Brian coming tonight to do the proposal? Oh, he is here. Oh, there you are. You were right in front of me. Do you guys want to just get set up at least and, and, and we'll start? You're going to do it from there? Okay, all right, well then, let's go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So another very exciting presentation this evening on tax classification. So what is tax classification? So tax classification is the allocation of the tax levy, and there's four major classes of property, one being the residential class, and then we have the commercial, industrial, personal property, commonly referred to as the CIP. So what is involved in tonight's hearing? So tonight, the selectmen have four decisions to make. What are those decisions? One is you have to adopt a residential factor, and then whether or not to adopt an open-space discount, adopt a residential exemption, and four, adopt a small commercial exemption. So before we get into those decisions, just to kind of give you some of the highlights of our property valuations, comparing FY '19 to FY '18, if you look here, a single-family home in FY '18 was assessed at $566,000. This year, it's gone to $584,000, or about a 3.2 percent increase. Maintaining the tax rate at a uniform rate, the tax rate's going down a penny from 1938 to 1937. However, if you look, the average single-family tax bill's going from 10.9 at 11.3. Again, that's maintaining a uniform tax rate at 1937. On the flip side of this, with the commercial industrial property, and their average valuation in '18 was $937,000. This year, it's going to $967,000, about a 27,000 percent increase, or 3 percent. Bottom line is that tax bill's going from 18,205 to 18,736, or $531,000. So that kind of shows you the trend right now. So property values are up, the levy's up, but if you look at the tax rate, it's pretty much flat. Again, that's a, that's a uniform rate to a uniform rate comparison. So selectmen's decisions, we talked about adopting a residential factor. What does that really mean? Well, residential factor, we could shift the tax burden from the residential class to the CIP classes. So the adoption of a residential factor is crucial, and whether you want to maintain a single-family or a single-uniform rate, or you want to shift that burden to the CIP classes and have a dual rate. So adopting a residential factor, again, we determine the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class. That's it, status quo. Every, every class of property pays its proportionate share. Acton can shift up to 50 percent of the residential share of that tax levy to the CIP class, the commercial, industrial, and personal property. So if we adopt a residential factor of one, there's no shift. We have a uniform rate. If we adopt a residential factor of something less than one, that results in increasing the CIP percentage of the tax levy. So you're pulling the burden from the residential and you're putting it onto the CIP class. So here's an example of what would happen to an average single-family home under different scenarios with a 5 percent shift, a 10 percent, and a 20 percent shift. So just under a 5 percent shift, they'd be saving about $64 on a tax bill of about $11,318. If you do a 20 percent shift, you're saving about $286. And then if we look at a commercial property value, a 5 percent shift would shift them $826. So again, if you just go back and look at the single-family valuation, they would save 64, commercial would pay $826. And with a 20 percent shift, they'd be paying $3,200 more versus a single-family home, which is saving 286. So you kind of get a feel of what the shift is doing to one class versus the other. So moving on, so if we adopt a residential factor, again, that one, a factor of less than one shifts that burden from that residential sector to the CIP class. Acton's residential factor for FY '18 was one, meaning no shift. In fact, it's historically been like that probably for the last 15 years or so. Adopt an open-space discount. So right now, we believe that Acton doesn't have any parcels that would fall into this category. Adopt a residential exemption. So this is a pretty complicated exemption. It basically reduces the taxable value of a property, taxpayer's principal resident with certain exclusions. That can be up to 35 percent of the average assessed value of all residential property. That includes vacant land, that includes condominiums, two families, so on and so forth. Right now, that averages about $491,000. So if you wanted to shift that burden up to 35 percent, you could shift $172,000 of anything less than the average to anything above that average. The problem is with this exemption is it only applies to those primary residents that are your domicile. So it's not rental units or anything else. So those would have to be identified, which ones it applies to versus those that it does not apply to. So again, it's, the exemption is recovered, doesn't change the tax levy, it's just shifting the tax levies recovered by the balance of those residential properties. And again, Acton has never adopted this residential exemption, and very few communities do adopt it. The small commercial exemption, this basically reduces the taxable value of eligible businesses up to 10 percent. Those eligible businesses are determined by apartment employment training. Their valuation has to be less than $1 million. They have to have more, less than 10 or more employees. Those employees could be located at different locations. Here lies the problem with this exemption, that they get a separate tax rate from the personal property. So it's a shift within the CI class, commercial industrial. But we don't know necessarily whether this exemption would get passed on to the lessee. You'd have to get into specific leases. So the lesser would have to understand that this would get passed on to the lessee, but there's no guarantee that that is the case. The exemption, again, is recovering only by putting, shifting that burden on the CI classes and not the personal property. So in effect, you could have a residential tax rate, commercial industrial tax rate, and a personal property tax rate. Again, Acton has never adopted this. We don't recommend it. It's very complicated and confusing, and very few communities go with this exemption. So tonight, the selectmen, again, have those four decisions. The first one being the most important would be to adopt that residential factor. Again, a factor of one means a uniform tax rate. Anything less than a factor of one means you're shifting the tax burden to the CIP classes. Adopt an open-space discount. We believe Acton doesn't have anything that qualifies as open-space discount. And three, adopt a residential exemption. And then four, adopt a small commercial exemption. And that's this evening's presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Are there questions or comments from members of the board? Peter. Peter, can you use that microphone?
Can you go to slide number three? Let's see, I think it's one, two, maybe four. Year-to-year comparison, it says.
Is that it, Peter?
No, it's a chart. I think it's a commercial chart. Okay.
Is it the shift of the valuation over eight, 19, 19 over 18?
Right. I just don't understand, no, no, that was the one I was looking at.
Sorry.
I don't understand why you have average commercial valuation at 869 and, I'm sorry, go back. I get, I'm looking at the 18, 19 over 18. Okay, so you've got the average commercial valuation at 889, and then you've got the valuation at 939.
Oh, good catch. You're right. Nope, that's my bad. It should be, it should be 967, 252. You're correct.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and then just a comment, I'm looking at the backup materials. The percentage of commercial, industrial, personal property in town continues to go down. In 2014, it was 12.6 percent. In 2018, it was 11.4 percent. And 2019, it's down to 11.1 percent. And consequently, obviously, the percentage of residential, well, includes open space, which is a good thing, goes up. But that open space is not all, it doesn't include conservation land in town.
That's correct.
It's just open space that would be eligible for this, which doesn't exist, right?
Yeah.
So it's all residential, so that's just an unfortunate trend. I don't know what we can do to turn it around, but we sure should fight, look at ways to continue to try to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from the audience? Sorry, Brian, do you mind?
David on Wolf Rock School Street. In terms of residential exemptions, I'll just note that some towns, I'd have to look up where, but I know I've seen it. Some towns give exemptions, slight exemptions, for historic homeowners in hopes of them, you know, helping them to preserve their properties. In our case, there's about 600 properties on the cultural resources list, and there's about 200 in the HDC districts, not all of which, of course, are single-family houses, but just to give you an idea of the number. I think there's about 8,000 and something residences in Acton, so you're looking at, you know, less than 10 percent of the, probably you're looking at 6 or 7 percent or something like that. But they do give some sort of break because I can tell you, as one who owns a house like that, it costs a lot of money to keep them up. So in hopes of, you know, encouraging people to maintain them and pass them on, et cetera, they do, some towns do offer that. I'd have to do some research or something to find you what the exemption is. I think it's in the order of 10 percent or 20 percent or something like that.
Thank you.
To our projects, West Acton, I've got some questions. So the percentage that's not residential, so I guess that's commercial, that's, it used to be 15 percent, and was there a chart or anybody know what the trend is like there?
There's in the backup materials, which are available in our packet, and as Peter noted, it's gone down in recent years, and you, I don't know if you can find it.
It's all right. My, my point-
It was 11.4.
Yeah. My point was that we are, Acton Water District estimates we have 200 new residential water hookups for housing units in a year that we don't add very much of anything on the business. So it's no surprise that it's, the percentage of commercials going down. I want to understand the open-space discount, and I was hoping to get an idea of what would qualify. Like what, are we missing something? That's, that's what I'd like to know. I don't know.
Why don't you ask all of your questions?
Oh, sure.
And then we'll just deal with that.
So I've heard that some municipalities are either passed or considering passing a chain tax. So this is a tax on large international corporations. They do it in a variety of different ways, size of buildings, it's a surcharge on top of that, impervious surfaces. So I'd like to know if we could get that going on. And then I think Brian said that the residential exemption, there aren't many in mass, and I'd like to know how many there are. And that was it. Thanks.
Okay. Brian, do you want to address at least a question on the open-space discount and what does apply to that?
Yes, so Tara, the open-space discount, we believe that anything that would fall into that category has significant tax reductions right now under Chaptah Land Program. So anything that we believe would be eligible under that particular class has already fallen into the Chaptah 61 class, and they're getting pretty substantial discounts, depending on the type of program. So for instance, under Chaptah 61, it's forestry. If you have a forest management plan for 10 years or more, you get assessed at a fraction of what the full market value would be on a per-acre basis, depending on the type of forest. Then you have 61A, which is agriculture/horticulture, and presently, under that program, you have a per-acre value probably as low as $40 an acre, going up to maybe $2,100 an acre, again, depending on the type of farming that you're doing on that property. And it could be multiple classes on a single property. So you could have some acreage at $40 an acre, and you could have some at $240 an acre, again, depending on the class of, depending on the use of that property. And then you have 61B, which is recreation, and that also has a reduction, I believe, of 75 percent, so it's down to 25 percent of its full market value. There's a bit of a caveat with these because if you do enter into these programs, the town does place a lien on it. So if you were to enter into the program and you don't follow through with it, the town has a right to go back and recapture some of that lost tax, and in some cases, there may be a penalty as well.
Yes.
Seeing nobody from the EDC here, I'll at least step up, even though I'm just a visitor. They probably would like to not increase the, or the, decrease the residential fraction. They want a .1, the same one, 1.0, right? Is that what the businesses want? Anyway, I'm advocating for no change. I am definitely in favor of the historic discount, and other towns also have been looking at a mansion surcharge. So a surcharge for over a certain amount that's considered a public necessity, an amount of space for living. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, seeing nobody else standing, other questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, so then we have four votes that we need to take. So the first one would be to adopt a residential factor. If you want to adopt a residential factor of 1.0, then please just state in your motion that the tax rate is $19.37. I have a list here if somebody wants to.
Move to-
Do you want it here?
What? Oh.
Just so you word it correctly.
Okay, I move to adopt a residential factor of 1.0, which will result in a uniform tax rate between residential and corporate/business of $19.37.
Okay, Janet moved. Joan seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, on the second issue?
Move to, move to not grant an open-space discount, or not to adopt an open-space discount, given that it's not applicable.
Second.
Okay, Janet moves, and Peter seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Move to not adopt a residential exemption. I would just add that if you adopt a residential exemption, then the tax that you don't collect from the exempted residents falls on the shoulders of everybody else in town. So you have to be careful about the exemptions that you approve because you have to, if you're going to prove it, you have to know that if you're a taxpayer and you're not subject to the exemption, you're going to be paying more taxes, so anyhow.
So Janet made a motion. Does somebody want to second it?
I don't want to adopt an exemption unless I'm qualified for it.
Does some, somebody want to second that? Okay. Janet moved. Joan seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And finally, move not to adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second. Janet moves, and Joan seconds. All those in, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great, excellent. Thank you, Brian, very much for coming tonight. All right, so now-
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just have one form that I need to have signed by the board.
Sure. Do you want to just give it to John or Lisa, and we'll move it along? Thank you. Okay, moving on to selectmen's business. The first item is a discussion on the follow-up meeting from our meeting with Mass Housing. So, Mr. Manager, do you want to start that?
Yes, thank you. Following the November meeting, when we discussed the Piper Lane follow-up, there was concern from residents about the information that was shared with Mass Housing. So following that meeting, I called and scheduled an appointment with Greg Watson and Michael Busby in Boston at Mass, at the Mass Housing offices. The chair, Katie Green, joined me. She works right across the street, fortunately. And we had a nice meeting with both Greg and Michael. They gave us a lot of time, and I brought with me hard copies of all the correspondences and other things that we had received, just to make sure that they had them. I also brought a binder that was provided to us by a resident, which they'd already had a copy of, so I got to keep it, which has a lot of good information in it. And they basically went through the project with us. We spent a lot of time. They have a big screen in their office, and we went through a lot of the concerns. We talked about the issues that were raised with regards to the driveway and the access road, and how if you look on Google Street View, you can see there's a sharp corner now currently, and what it might look like if there was a road there. We went through some of the issues that the board discussed, both in its comments and some issues that the board listened to during the public comment period. And they, in summary, they said, "We understand the town's position, and it's that you're opposed to the project." But they appreciated that we came out and shared the additional information, and what else? They are still reviewing the application, and they said that if there's anything material that changes, they would let us know. Did anyone miss anything?
Yeah, no, I think, so it was helpful to be able to show them, you know, they had done one of them, had done the walk, but to be able to kind of go over the map, like you said, with them, and talk about some of the additional concerns in person, just to make sure they really heard them. And as you noted, they did say they're, they're still reviewing the application, that they don't actually do their, their full review until the, they deem that the application is complete. And right now, it's not, as was noted, that there are a number of pieces that are missing. And so they're currently working with the applicant to get all of those pieces filled in, including the number of items that were pointed out by residents and others that were missing from this. And so they won't do that review until it is complete, and that when they do deem it complete, then they'll let us, they'll send us an updated version of the application, as John noted, and let us know if anything has materially changed. And they said if they think anything has materially changed, including if the street, the access is moved, because the current application says that they're using part of Piper Lane as the access. And in our hearing, they said, you know, "Well, we might shift that over to not use Piper Lane at all." And so they, Mass Housing told us that, they consider that a material change, and they would then allow us to have another comment period and a chance to review that change and other changes, and have another public hearing, and submit additional comments based on those changes. So I thought that was helpful to know. They did also talk about the appraisal. There's, they go through an appraisal process for the site, because I was talking to them about our efforts. We were talking to them about our efforts previously to purchase this, and the constraints that we had in how we're allowed to appraise a site to purchase for open space, because that, the, the main site that we're trying to purchase doesn't have frontage itself, and so it has a much more limited value than what they sold it to this developer for. So they undergo a, an appraisal process that's done by a third party, and they noted that it does take into account regulations in Acton, like the limit on the length of the single-access road. So we were talking about that being- So, we were talking about that being one of the main points that we had brought up, that, you know, we've never approved a single access road that long before. And in fact, we've denied many that, that have been that length or, or shorter because of the safety and, and other concerns with those. And so, they said they will take that into account in the appraisal. It doesn't, what that does though is that it could impact the valuation of the property, which could have an impact on the developers, how they calculate the developers' potential profit. And because the profits for forty Bs are capped, that then some amount, you know, would have to be turned back to the town if they exceed that profit. So, even if the developer purchased it, and I can't remember what the purchase price for that property was, but if the valuation is lower, that's what they use, Mass Housing then uses when calculating the developers' potential profit. So, that, that could have an impact on, on how the developer feels about going forward. But, and they said that was still underway, and they thought it would take another couple of weeks. So, this was a few weeks ago, so I'm not sure where, where it is at this point on that. And then they did, you know, again, I mean, they, they did underline to us that the zoning board of appeals process is really where the town has the most say or puts together, can best put together a defense for denying a project. And they said that in their opinion, the most effective defenses focus on the issues of public safety and public health. And that issues like impacts to conservation land aren't as strong, and that developers can often show that they've provided, you know, some sort of mitigation, and then that those are, you know, then considered, even though, you know, the town very strongly feels that it's not adequate in any way. They said the issues around public safety and public health are kind of the strongest arguments. They, it was interesting that they noted, we talked also about that we believe that we will reach the safe harbor, but we're concerned that the timing of that won't be in time, before a develop, the developer would be able to file a comprehensive permit on this. So, they were somewhat sympathetic to that, but, and we're happy to hear about the other affordable projects in town. But they did say if, if we haven't, you know, if, if those haven't gone forward yet, and we haven't reached safe harbor, by the time they file, file it, then, then that, you know, we, they don't, you know, the safe harbor doesn't apply. And so, they did actually specifically, they also noted sometimes towns can demonstrate in other ways their commitment to meeting the ten percent goal. And that can include things like adopting forty R zoning, or, or having other affordable housing developments. They mentioned specifically the failed vote we had on rezoning Kelly's Corner. And that, that was not helpful to us. So, you know, they, they had kind of implied that had we passed that, that might have been considered as a demonstration of our commitment to, to reaching affordable, our affordable housing goals, so. And then we also talked to them about the historical, potential historical and archaeological concerns as well. And they did note, you know, that the, that, the kind of process to go through Secretary Galvin's office and Mass Historical Commission review happens once a comprehensive permit is filed. And so, that will happen at that time, as well if one is filed. But so, those were some of the, the things I think we talked about. Like John said, they were, you know, they did listen to us and offered us some advice and, and did give us a lot of their time, which was appreciated. And, and they did say they were very clear that the town is opposed, strongly opposed to, to this project. So, I think that's the initial, if folks have questions or comments, and, and we can talk later about what we want our next steps to be as well. That's sort of an overview. Or I can open it up to public. If you have any questions or comments, you're more than welcome to, John.
Well, I thank you, Katie and John, for, you know, reaching right out to Mass Housing. I, you know, we were, I think we're all disappointed with the letter that went out. It could have been stronger. And I thought the, the best next course was not to write a letter, but to actually seek out a meeting and spend time with them. You can cover a lot more ground by making the case and hearing from them and going back and forth. And what you can put in a letter, and you don't know really what they read and what they don't read. So, I, I thought that was good. Do they give you any sort of timeline?
So, I mean, they did say it depends on when the application is completed. So, that depends a lot on when the developer responds to that. They, again, they did say it had seemed like there were, it was going to be at least three weeks before the appraisal was done. And they won't do their review until then. So, you know, potentially, they could start reviewing this, you know, towards the end of this year, which is fast approaching. But, you know, the one, I thought the very heartening part was that if there is anything that's materially changed from the original application, from when they get a complete application, that then we get another chance to have a comment period, which could mean a thirty-day comment period. So, that slows down the review by another, you know, at least thirty days. So, I thought that was very useful and could potentially be helpful to us. Janet?
I just wanted to comment about the letter that we sent. John and I don't agree on this issue. I read the letter, and I thought it was a strong letter. I didn't agree with the observations of other people, that they thought it was weak. I didn't think the Brookline letter was a particularly good one. It was longer, it had more detail. And maybe there was more expression of, you know, overt expression of indignation and outrage. But I didn't think that that sort of sentiment would have made our letter stronger. I think that we made the point right up front, that we didn't support the project in its current configuration. And, and then everything else sort of rolled out from there. So, I, you know, I, I think I've been dealing with affordable housing projects for the entire almost nine years that I've been on the board. So, I know what makes a good letter and what doesn't. And it doesn't mean getting worked up. You make solid, you're a lawyer, you should know, I'm a lawyer too, you know. But it's sort of factual information. And I didn't think that the letter, the, the letter was lacking. We made our point pretty clearly. And it didn't need to be any more detailed or any more sort of, obviously, outrage, outrage expression, expressing. So, if that's, I, well, I just, I don't happen to care for that kind of argument anyway. It falls, it really pushes me the other direction when people make that sort of appeal, because I think that you should be able to make the same point without using sort of these, these sort of very colorful language that, you know, it's just very emotional, so.
I, I wasn't advocating for, for outrage in the letter. I just think it, it could have been stressed the, or stated the board's, you know, strong comments against the project a little better than what we did. But I think what you all have to keep in mind in the, in the, in the process, Mass Housing's scope is really very narrow. It's, it's basically two questions. Is the town at ten percent? And if you're not at ten percent, they're going to likely send the letter. And then the second consideration that they have is whether the developer is qualified to do the project. And this particular developer has done a project up in Salisbury. But again, I just got to have to commend Katie and John, and, you know, Katie's sharing of information tonight as to where it stands and what we might do. I was a little disappointed to learn, I had hoped that the Avalon Two project was moving along a bit quicker. As of two weeks ago, they still hadn't put in their comprehensive permit application. And the key thing there is that their application would have to be approved and, and then be submitted to the safe harbor process. And once that's granted, then we're in safe harbor. However, if this developer gets his Pell letter and then applies for his special permit, if we're not there into safe harbor, safe harbor doesn't become a defense that the CBA would have in setting aside the, the comprehensive permit request for these folks.
Right. Yeah, the way they described it to us is that they use, that the project eligibility letter is what gives the applicant the opportunity to apply for a comprehensive permit. And that's how they really, bless you, view their role. And again, they said the ZBA is really where the town can have the most say in put together a defense for denying a project. And I did find it helpful that they, they did tell us where to focus specifically, bless you, where they found the most successful examples of, of a town putting together a denial at the ZBA level, and then that being upheld. And that, again, is focusing really on issues of public safety and public health. I was dismayed when, you know, we were talking about the issues of the, the turn, you know, out of the curve of the road and try, people trying to turn out of that development on there. And, and one of them said, "Well, you know, you could have no left turn." I said, "That's not, that's not, that's not practical, and that's not anything." You know, I tried to explain, it's everybody's, anybody that's going to Route Two or anywhere, they're, they're going to have to turn left to get out of there. And if you turn right, either they're turning right and then probably zipping around the, you know, little loop in front of the fire station, which is very much not what you want people doing, and then going back, where they're just going to ignore it and turn left, or in five years, come to a future board and say, "This is horrible, we should be allowed to turn left out of here." You know, it, it's just creating a problem. And so, that was frustrating that that, you know, they, they threw that out there, and it really wasn't. That's not a, a reasonable solution for whether you're, you know, a resident there or anybody. But, so it was helpful to be able to at least, you know, talk those things through with them and react to them about something like that, so that they don't just think, you know, "Okay, well, that's a reasonable answer." You know, we were able to say, "No, it's not, and, and here's why," at least. So, that was, that was helpful to do, so.
Yeah, just to share with the, with the audience, what I was able to learn on the CBA process, if the ZBA is to deny a comprehensive permit application, the denial has to be fact-based. So, it's not just traffic is bad, traffic is congested. There has to be a study to support it. So, you know, throughout the, that process, the fact base for the denial, we have to have.
And there are, again, some facts, I think, are clear, particularly around the safety issue in, you know, our fire department's comments and others, that can be fleshed out of the safety of fire trucks being able, and ambulances and other safety vehicles being able to get up this very long, single-access road. I think that is one of the major issues. And they did seem to acknowledge that that was a very long, single-access entry, you know, and exit. So, I think that was important. But I will open up to the public, if anybody has any comments or questions.
Alyssa Nichol, and I'm at Seventy-six School Street. I just wanted to point out that this property has not been purchased. And I, I apologize, I didn't write down exactly what you said during your comments, Chairman Green. But it, it was implied that.
They have a purchase and sale agreement.
They have a purchase and sale agreement, and it hasn't been purchased. But just, so there's no confusion from anybody in attendance or watching tonight. I want to thank the town manager and the chairman for going to meet Mass Housing. We really appreciate that. I am disappointed that Mass Housing is going to potentially send the application back to the town if there's a material change. Because according to the Mass Housing website, it states very clearly that an application is only sent to a municipality after it's been determined complete. So, the fact that we received as a town and spent hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars studying this and conducting that traffic study, it's really disappointing that the state feels that that's acceptable. It's also my understanding, and my understanding is very limited, that a project eligibility letter is granted by Mass Housing if a site is deemed appropriate for development, for housing. And I think that we've made it very clear that this site is actually not appropriate. And I would also encourage the board to remember that the comprehensive permit cannot be applied for by this particular developer until next June in 2019, because there's already been a permit that's been denied on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Hahn, one of our School Street. Alyssa just took one of my points, which is the cooling-off period. So, they can't even file a piece of paper with the ZBA before June fifteenth, 2019. So, in theory, hopefully Avalon will come through, and we'll be in safe harbor, okay? The other question I had was, did you point out our attorney's letter to them and the falsehoods? And I'll restrain myself from other language about it. But, you know, our attorney picked out some clear problems, which, given that there's three attorneys sitting on your board there, I would think that would raise a lot of red flags with you. And I would request that Town Council contact Mass General's council, general council, and ask for determination about, "What are you going to do about that?" Because this isn't the only town that this has happened in. It happened in Winchester, and Greg Watson just waved the thing through with a P E L letter. Same issues, same kind of obfuscations by the applicant, same kind of misrepresentations and veracity problems. And in that case, he just ignored it. So, I would ask that our Town Council contact Mass General's Town Council and put something in writing to us about why that's acceptable or not acceptable, because I would like it on written record for Mass Housing, that they've taken a serious look at that, so.
Thank you, David. Yeah, I will note, they did mention specifically reviewing that letter from Dan Hill, that, you know, they, they mentioned that. And again, told us that they were reaching out to get both complete, you know, having the applicant, complete sections that were missing, and to correct sections. So, you know, we can talk about what, if anything, we want to send on that, or see what, you know, if, if that's corrected in, in what is sent back to us as the complete, you know, application. Yes.
Yep. Jeff Corman, thirteen Piper Road. One of the things I learned at, learned while working for the state in doing a permit processing was that normally, there's a technical deficiency or a deficiency letter that goes out from an agency back to the proponent. Has there anything like that been sent out by Mass Housing? Back to the, have we seen it?
I have not seen anything.
Did they, did they issue something like that?
I don't, I don't know.
I would think we'd be CC'd if they did, or should be CC'd on all correspondence from them back to the developer. Or you should insist that you're CC'd on all correspondence. Typically, when we issued permits for hazardous waste facilities, which is the program I worked in at the state, we had a point person who was the lead reviewer. Is there a lead reviewer at Mass Housing? I'm assuming it's not Mr. Watson, since he's the manager.
I think it's Michael Busby on this one, and then Greg Watson.
And what's his background? Is he a planner, is he an engineer, is he a?
I don't know personally his background.
Did nobody ask him what he does? What does he do? I mean, I'd be, I'd be very curious, who's the actual technical person reviewing these plans? I mean, you have to have some sense of what their, you know, how, what their experience is, I'd think. So, I would, I would ask that we try to find out who is actually doing the technical review of the plans, the site layout, the wetlands requirements, all of that. It's got to be fairly difficult to do that sort of thing. And it can't just be somebody who's, you know, an appointed, you know, political appointee. It's got to be somebody's technical.
So, I'll note the one difference here, and I think they'd say is that they're not issuing a permit. They issue the project eligibility letter, which, again, is what they described as the opportunity for the developers to submit their comprehensive permit to the zoning board of appeals. So, so the Mass Housing does not actually, their role is not a permitting authority for this kind of project.
So, how do they make determinations that meets their regulations, other than?
So, their, their regulations, again, are around determining whether the town has reached its affordable housing goal and around whether the project is what they call feasible.
I mean, I'm, I'm very ignorant of how Mass Housing works. I don't really understand the agency, what their process is. I mean, it's probably very different from the agency I worked for, which was DEP. But we had technical people that reviewed these. we had technical people that reviewed these applications.
Right, it's a different sort of level.
And they were, I'm sure it, well, it sounds like it's a bit more political to me, but anyway. I'd be curi-, very curious if it is Mr. Busby who's doing the actual review, and if he has issued any sort of a letter back to the proponent. We'd like to, I think we'd like to see it here at SANA, as well as, I'm sure you'd like to see it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Bresson, 80 School Street. So my understanding is, is that they determine this based on whether it's a buildable lot and whether the developer is qualified. Is that what you said?
What I, what I said was, it was, the scope of their review was very narrow.
Yes.
One, is the town at 10%? And if it's not, that's not good. And then two, is the developer qualified to do the project? Those are the two things that they-
And I would argue that what we got was that the developer is not qualified. First of all, the developer is in litigation, or has been in litigation, and we don't even know what the litigation is about. Second, the developer put up a design that was based on another property and didn't even consider whether or not the grade, the access, the entry, the exit was acceptable or not. That's not good. Third, the developer had no clue about the sightlines. He, Mr. Ringwald said, move it west. Well, we did a traffic study and a safety study, and I agree, traffic is not going to be a consideration by the Mass Housing. It's going to be safety. We determined by an independent agency that the sightlines fail in both directions. And the sightline west is worse than the east. And when Ringwald said, well, just move it west, or move it off of Piper Lane, it only gets worse. So I would argue that this proves they're unqualified to even submit an application, and we should point that out. And why should we even accept an amendment from a developer that has proven that they are not qualified?
Yeah, it's not up to us to accept it. I mean, that's the problem, right?
Mass Housing is the eligibility, you know, authority.
Right, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with you, but we're not sitting as a judge on that one.
No, but we, but we, but with all due respect to them, whether they, if they submit the PEL, which they do most of the time, we really need to kind of remember these things as we go forward, because this is going to be very important for the ZBA. I mean, I don't think Mass Housing is concerned about traffic. They may not be concerned about sightlines or safety. They may not be concerned as much about historic or open space considerations, but we certainly are. And I think that should they submit the PEL, I think that we need to look very carefully at their resubmission. Again, I want to know who we're dealing with. I don't know what litigation. They clearly left that out. And we found out that there were four cases that they've been under investigation, Russell and, you know, Paquette. What were they investigated for? Are we dealing with reputable people who consider or don't consider safety and sightlines? And I think that we need, as a town, let's assume they get the PEL. Fine, but then we have to look at them very carefully, and we have to try to understand whether we want to support the next step. Thank you.
Right, and again, just to clarify for people, I think that's sort of, just to be clear, if a project eligibility letter is issued, it's not the end of the process by any means. Again, it go, then it gives them the opportunity, they can then file a comprehensive permit, in which case it's normally an even more detailed application, and the town, the public and others will be able to comment again, and it goes before the zoning board of appeals. And that is, again, where they were saying the town has its best opportunity to build its defense, and if, so that if we deny it, they were saying, you know, focus on issues of safety and public health. Unfortunately not, you know, conservation, I sort of, you know, we showed them the maps and said this, you know, it cuts right into conservation land. They said, well, it's not conservation land. I said, well, I mean, it all but is. And they said, well, it's not, so it doesn't, you know, that's not, not much, an argument as much in their eyes, so.
Just one more thing on the PEL. You know, awarding a PEL is essentially, the things you said it was, it's also the gateway to access funding, either from Mass Housing directly or from what's called the New England Fund, which is a consortium of banks that have agreed to finance 40Bs. So, you know, a developer misrepresenting himself on an application, he's essentially trying to access funding through, I would call it devious means, but it's a gateway to funding. To me, it's no different than a mortgage application. So I, you know, I'll just reiterate that I think you need to have Town Council, talk to their council, dig in and find out about this. I don't think there should be a redo, you know, that they can certify and sign an application and then get to go and correct it after the fact. That just is totally wrong to me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Grip. I live at 6 Sanders Way. Just on the subject of safety that you were talking about, that that may be something that we need to hammer, there was a really interesting article this past weekend in the Wall Street Journal, and it was about the fire, specifically, I think it was the car fire that was in Paradise, California, where the whole town died. And what was mentioned in the article was one of the biggest problems they had was that the town had allowed the developers to do longer, single-access roads and override what was normally allowed. They allowed them because the developers said they were going to make them a little bit wider, but it turned out, in this case, it wasn't wide enough, and they think that that was one of the things that they said they would never, ever do again, and what led to such a horrible cost of life. So that could be a really important safety issue.
Thank you.
Sarah Fredericks, West Acton. I hope the board considers being proactive about the qualification letter and challenging the developer's qualifications in a legal memo to the general counsel of Mass Housing. I believe that we can challenge both the site qualification and the developer's qualification proactively, and I hope that we do that. Also, just as a, and I don't know, you know, if this has ever been done, but an offer to buy down 10 condos and say, hey, look, we really want this site, we're willing to do something we were kind of looking at doing anyways as a town, we have a lot of support for the condo buy-down idea. And so it's just an idea to negotiate our way out of this situation. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, are there any comments or thoughts from board members, follow-ups or thoughts on next steps? Or do you want us to just wait till we hear back from Mass Housing? I'm just looking for direction from the board.
I'm sorry, just another, my point was, I didn't think we should wait, that waiting puts the other side, in a sense, in a position of strength. And if we call, if we challenge the qualifications of the developer right up front, I think we'll be in the best position. Thank you.
Sure, and then I'm just going to go to board comment.
I live on River Street. What is a purchase and sale agreement? Is that contingent on this plan going through? Do you know?
Yeah, so their purchase and sale, I believe with, with the owner, says that they will only purchase, you know, finalize a purchase when they-
If this goes through?
Right, that's my understanding. I haven't read their purchase and sale.
Okay, and secondly, all the comments that we're making, are these comments that we should be, we should be directing at Mass Housing, since they're the ones with the final say?
Yes, but, you know, that we have, they have reviewed the 100-plus comments they've received from residents so far. So if you've written to them already, that is part of that record. If you have not, then I would encourage you to send as well.
So they do, they are looking at input?
Yep, they, they had all of it. They told us that they had already started reviewing the emails and letters and everything that they had received. They had already reviewed the stuff from Dan Hill and others as well, so they review all of that.
Okay, and thirdly, oh, I forgot. Sorry.
Thank you. Peter, you had a comment?
No, I was just going to say, David is absolutely right. Mass Housing is not a planning agency. They used to be called Mass Housing Finance Agency. They're basically a bank, a semi-public organization set up to sell tax-exempt bonds, to lend to developers to build affordable housing. There's also this other fund that the banks in New England, I guess, have gotten together to try to help build affordable housing. So they're not planners. They don't look at the details of these plans, is my understanding. And I haven't read their regulations, but I don't know what the board feels about asking Town Council to take a look at this and see if there's some arguments that, based on past denials or based on regulations that Mass Housing has, that would give us a more forceful argument to ask them to deny the project eligibility letter. If they do issue the letter, and everybody said this, but there will be a full hearing before the zoning board of appeals. The developer can, has to pay for experts, engineers, certainly Town Council will be involved in that. All of the arguments that everybody's presented, including the safety and the public health arguments, will be thoroughly vetted, and the zoning board of appeals then issues a decision, which can get appealed by the developer if it's denied, to the State Housing Appeals Board, an administrative agency that makes decisions based on 40B's law about whether to overturn zoning board of appeals who deny applications for 40B developments. So I don't know what the board thinks about asking Town Council to take a look at this.
You're saying specifically related to the project eligibility letter?
Right. That's my understanding of what David was asking.
Janet?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to have a better understanding of what, you know, if there are some concerns that, about, about the developer, whatever, I would like to better understand what the process is at Mass Housing with regard to looking into those things and taking those things, sorts of things seriously, the sort of gaps, and whether it's at all influential or effective for a town through its board of selectmen to submit initial, additional comments, or if Mass Housing feels, you know, will ask you for the information. I don't know. It's just that I, they have a lot of stuff from us, including all of the comments from the butters, and I don't know, you know, at some point they'll start to get annoyed with us. I mean, even though I think that there are some real concerns that, that people have brought up and that we've addressed in our letter. But I would just, you know, I don't know if there's somebody in council's office who deals with Mass Housing a lot and knows somebody there who can say, okay, this, this is the person that's reviewing it and this person's good, or they're, they're just going to, they're just going to look at the site and, and look at the basics without going into detail about what traffic issues and all that. I mean, I know when you deal with, deal with the Department of Housing and Community Development, when they do the initial review, but of course, that's with the town's backing of projects. They're looking at location, whether it's walkable, whether there are conveniences nearby, whether it's a good place for housing of any sort, never mind affordable housing. Mass Housing maybe, we, in the time that I've been on the board, I think I can only think of one other Mass Housing application, and we shot it down because it was so bad. And it went nowhere. So most of our applications have gone, have been friendly 40Bs through the Department of Housing and Community Development, and those generally have, have gotten approved because they have the backing of the town. But we just don't have, in my experience, we haven't had very many applications to Mass Housing, because it's, you know, the developer typically wants to work with the town. In this case, that hasn't happened, and it makes it more complicated, so.
Right.
Katie, was there any sense in your conversation with John and Mass Housing people that there was a concern over multiple litigations that the developer had been involved with?
I don't remember that. No, I don't remember that being brought, being a concern. Again, they talked about the, they had reviewed all those issues. I'm not, I really, at this point, I think we've heard everything, so I guess the question for the rest of the board members is, do you want us to ask Town Council to reach out to Mass Housing? What would that, you know?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think that would be a wise course, and let's give that a good go.
Okay, so we'll ask, am I hearing any? I mean, is it, yes, specifically concerns around the developer or just-
Is the developer qualified to do the project? Is, you know, what is the extent of these multiple litigations that the developer has been involved in?
Okay. Okay, so a sense of the board is to have Town Council look at the sort of concerns around the developer and issues of litigation, and-
The developer's qualifications are one of the two flashpoints here.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jean Bresson again.
So, so hold on, you got to be recognized by me, and at this point, I'm not sure, I don't know. I'm going to allow, like, one more comment, because I think we've, you know, unless it's materially, you know.
Thank you. It's not just the litigation. They lied about the walking distance, they lied about the elevation, they lied about a number of things. They were flagrant, not just gaps, but lies. There was gaps in terms of the litigation that we found out, but they lied about walkability, they lied about the grade, they lied about a number of things. And my question is, how can we trust? How can the Mass Housing trust? It's like what David said. I think Town Council should look into what happens when an applicant submits a PEL with falsehoods, outright falsehoods.
So again, those are the issues that, specifically around, I talked to them extensively about the walkability issue, John and I did, and those are issues that, again, they said they are reaching out and getting clarification from the developer on. So, you know, and it's just, it's not really up to us, we can't say, you know, ultimately, it's going to have to be up to Mass Housing to decide whether or not they think they're not qualified. And we can raise those issues and have council look in to see if there are further issues about that, but they do have those concerns raised in what we've sent them already as well. But so I don't, I don't know the extent to if we, you know, anyways, I don't think Town Council expounding on the things that have already been said in terms of the issues with the existing application are, is going to be as useful as having them look into the qualification issue.
Ms. Green, could I speak just briefly?
Yeah, if it's something new, very briefly, and then-
My name is Barbara Moore. I live at 8 Piper Road. I'm part of the SANA group. It seems to me Mass Housing is a fiduciary, particularly in the way that you have described the narrow responsibility and authority that they have. In any kind of construct, public or private, fiduciaries have certain legal obligations, and those legal obligations require that they pay attention to due diligence and that they conduct their affairs with that kind of ethical standard. When you look at an application, whether it's preliminary, whether it's incomplete, even if it's just to give them the opportunity to do something, in this case, raise funds to do something on a 40B project, you have to look at the qualifications of that applicant. That is a fiduciary's obligation. You were given a document that was egregiously poorly put together. You said that. You were given a document that was woefully inadequate and probably filled with misrepresentations. The Mass Housing Authority, as a fiduciary, failed their obligation, even in the most preliminary sense. So I would suggest that the legal representative for our town, who is our Town Council, is within his or her rights to request Mass Housing to pay attention, perhaps more thoroughly, to that fiduciary responsibility, which they have failed. My tax dollars as a citizen of this state, my tax dollars as a resident of Acton, go for all of those people that work in that organization, and at a minimum, they should be asked to meet that due diligence fiduciary standard. I don't believe they have, putting aside anything specific to the content of their project. I hope you don't consider this an outrageous point of view or something that is excessively indignant. It is just the, the conduct that fiduciaries are obligated to make. They haven't done that at Mass Housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so I think we have a sense of the board on reaching out to Town Council and asking them to follow up on the developers', concerns of developers' qualifications and to share that with us and with Mass Housing. Does that sound?
Well, is the shortcomings in their application-
Right, which again, have been pointed out to them, you know, and again, I think those were somewhat at least addressed in the, in the meeting with Mass Housing. It was helpful to know, you know, they didn't view this as a complete application, I think. So again, I don't, I don't think they felt like everything was answered. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the third item on selectmen's business, our sustainability policy discussion. So I'm trying to remember the last meeting we discussed this at. We had redrafted this, I had submitted a redraft of the sustainability policy, and we had received comments from- we had received comments from the public on that redraft and then had a discussion at, sorry, can you just, we're continuing our meet, excuse me, we're continuing our meeting, so can you just move quietly out of the room, and if you have any conversations, have them downstairs and not right outside? So again, we had a discussion, reacted to the comments we had received to the public. I heard some comments and feedback from members of the board. So John and I worked on a re-redraft of the sustainability policy, so this is version three or four that we have sent out and is before you tonight for review. So I'm hoping people had a chance to review it, and I open it up to questions or comments from members of the board. Janet?
I think it's a lot better. The last draft that I commented on, at our last discussion of this, it was, it was, I was unhappy with it, and, and I think I was unhappy that it was enough, I don't know which iteration it was, the third draft or something, but I, I was sort of disappointed that it was taking so long for us to get to the point we're at right now. I mean, this is really concise, it's clear, and, you know, it lays out what the purpose of this policy is, and it goes into enough sort of plain English information, and, and then has, you know, the, the list of stuff at the back, which I gather may or may not change every year, but to illustrate what it is that the, we're talking about in the policy for people who don't, might not understand the beginning fully. So I, I think it's where it should have been a while ago. So thank you for, for your respective efforts, John and Katie, so.
Thanks. Yeah, it's a process. My, one of my goals with this, the reason why, was to try to get it down to a page, so, like, there were some slight formatting changes I had to make to make that fully happen, but, but I did, 'cause I thought, like you said, it would make it cleaner and easier to understand. Peter?
I, I think it sounds fine. I had a couple of questions about appendix A, which I think, is this actually part of the policy or references it? So I'd like to add, under energy and climate, the fact that the town has funded through the Green Advisory Board, a study to calculate all of the carbon emissions put out in town through every source of carbon emissions. I think that includes the methane leaks as well, to give us a baseline from which we can calculate how we're, what progress we're making toward reducing emissions. And you can, you know, use whatever language you think is appropriate to describe that. Under number one, anti-idling ordinance. First of all, we don't have ordinances in towns, we have bylaws. And I'm not sure, do we have a bylaw just for town vehicles? Isn't there a state law that's anti-idling? I'm not sure what that refers?
No, I think we have an, an, a by, I don't know if it's a bylaw, but I know we do around, you're not supposed to idle longer than five.
I thought that was all vehicles. I didn't think that was just town vehicles.
I'd have to look this up. This one was added by some of my colleagues and, and some of my supporters on Green Acton.
There is a sound, there is a sign, or there used to be at the train station, that says, "State law prohibits idling vehicles for more than five minutes." I think we've talked to Corey or Dean or somebody about this. You could turn it off for 30 seconds after five minutes and then turn it back on, but I thought there was a state law, anti-idling law.
I'll take things at the end, if you have a clarification on that.
I was just gonna say, it is a state law.
Yeah, it was a state law. Tara, I just said I would take it at the end. I'm not, this is not a free-for-all meeting. I'd like to just make that clear for people, just now and going forward, for all time. These are not free-for-all meetings. Okay, thank you, Peter. Comments? Questions, concerns?
You know, thank you guys for taking this on. It's, it's very well done and much improved, and it's responsibly aspirational and very practical in its implementation. And thank you.
Joan, thoughts? Okay. All right, now I will open it to public comment.
Totally in support. I thought you said unless you have a clarification to this, and it's my understanding that we did pass something, but that state law caught up with us and then passed the state law. So did we pass a tighter one, Jim, than the state law subsequent? I know you had some background on that.
Hey.
Yes.
Jim Snyder Grant.
Thank you for abiding by my rules. You get a cookie.
Jim Snyder Grant, Hefman Hill. So my memory of this is that around the time of becoming a green community, we, the, the, the town issued guidance to its employees to, you know, not be idling, so, but it's fine if it's not on the list, if it, you know, it doesn't have that same weight of, you know, bylaw.
Right.
Yeah. And I just wanted to also support wholeheartedly Peter's suggestion about adding the, the carbon footprint study that's currently being figured out by the, it's being done by the CADMS group. I just came from the Green Advisory Board meeting where they were reviewing the preliminary results, and I think it's gonna be an impressive and important study for setting the groundwork for what we do next. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that was a great addition that we should add. And if people think of other things, this is meant, this back appendix is meant to be a living document. It's not, you know, just saying, these are all the things we've done. There are probably others that we have forgotten about, and hopefully many, many more that we will do, that, you know, again, we, we can add on as we go, so. Okay, any other comments from the audience? Yes, Danny?
Hi, Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. I mostly just wanna thank the board on collaborating and coming to this conclusion. I think that the, the meat of the policy has stayed true, that, you know, all decisions made by the town will go through this sustainability filter, this filter where sustainability will be considered. And I applaud the board for doing this. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then does anybody want to make a motion?
I move we adopt, the selectmen adopt the environmental sustainability policy that's before us this evening.
Okay, John has made a motion, and Joan has seconded. Any other further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a friendly amendment to include the changes that we've discussed.
Fine.
Okay, so John's motion now includes the changes that we discussed to adding the Green Advisory Board's carbon emissions study and removing the anti-idling ordinance. Joan, would you like to second that? Okay, great. Any other, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and I would just like to offer my thanks specifically to Jim Snyder Grant and Deborah Seimes, who have done yeoman's work in putting this together with me. So thank you very much for your leadership on this, and we are really excited to have this in place, so, thank you. All right, seeing no other items on our agenda, Deborah, motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, Janet's moved, Joan has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, and have a good night.